Is being recorded and will be available to the public on request and members of public may access this meeting through our website. Now we have an opportunity for members of the public to suggest additional topics for discussion or to a case of interest. Presentation will be limited, three minutes. Do we have anybody present like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll go to the next item on our agenda and that's the Chancellor's update.
Oh, thank you, sir. I've got a couple of things, but really, you know, we're into our, I forget what number of week it is and the COVID and everything seems to be going in the right direction. We're bringing back classes slowly and I hope by the next semester that we're able to do a little bit more of hands-on classroom type instructions. So with that, I'd like Dr. Garrett, who's been working diligently for the last couple of months and her team to get us through our next phase of our accreditation, which is our fifth year reaffirmation, fifth year review. And she just submitted that and so I wanted her to kind of give you all a quick update and a briefing on what that is and how that fits into the tenth year review, which is the big one. But Dr. Garrett?
Yes, we, as the Chancellor said, we just submitted that. That required reacquisition. It would require reacquisition. Our next reacquisition obviously might be done. However, we've already committed, uh, probably. Decided that ten years was too long.
Got to get it closer.
Better?
Yeah, if you get close to it, we can hear you.
So.
There you go.
There we go?
Yeah.
So they decided that ten years was too long. And so every five years, in between the tenure and the fifth year, we have to do what's called a fifth year interim report. Now, the tenure is like seventy-three some odd principles we have to address. The fifth year is twenty-two. There are twenty-two principles that we had to address for this fifth year reacquisition that was due today. We got it in the mail Friday, FedEx Friday at 5:15. I made sure, I watched it was delivered to Saks yesterday at 10:32, I think, something like that. So they had it in hand. I wanted to show you what we submitted to them. I want to have one.
And everybody understand, this is not just targeted at us. This is all institutions that are credited through Saks, COC. So, I don't know, eighteen hundred institutions throughout the eleven states.
So we had to submit eight copies of it and so that it's nice and neat, we put it in this little zipper pouch with the instructions, we had access it, and this is how we have to submit it on a USB drive. I've got one loaded here and I want to show you a little bit of what we did. First of all, before I do that, many, many people in this institution were involved with the writing, the submission of documents, supporting documents, reviews, and re-reviews, especially that the Chancellor. However, there are two people, two people that I really, really, really want to recognize. Dean Stephanie Gregory Roberts, will you please stand? She basically wrote this from the beginning. She did all of the hard work. We wouldn't be where we are today without her writing ability and her analysis of the information she got and compiling it together. So thank you so much. Is Erica here? Oh, there she is, Erica. She did this. Erica Burkin, she's the manager of web and graphics. She did this, what I'm about to show you. She stuck with us night and day to get this ready to go. It's not just a matter of sending in pieces of paper or PDF files. You have to basically create a website that is easily accessible and can be used navigation with. And Erica did that. Thank you so much, Erica. I really appreciate everything you did. Now, this isn't the end. We, after I, we have this, well, we've got this submitted, then in November, we're going to have a review of our offsite, seven offsite locations. I have to submit that sometime October. Don't go anywhere. And then hopefully everything will be approved in December and then we'll know what we have to do.
Yeah, Saks, Saks reached out, their vice president reaches out to Dr. Garrett and they talk about the sites and which sites they want to visit. So it's not, you know, we don't, we don't get to decide. They get to pick actually and they, they pick with our recommendation. That means they've been to our sites, so they understand the challenges we have at these sites. So they've worked with Dr. Garrett to pick out some of the sites to visit.
And the fifth year, the sites that they, these are sites that were not reviewed in the tenure. So anything that we have submitted since the tenure is up for picking. And then from there, they sent me the list of those sites and then from there, we narrowed it down and I make recommendations based on the feedback the site directors and the different Chancellors gave me. And luckily, Dr. Shealy, he's a senior vice president at Saks, took our recommendation. So there's seven sites.
And this is worldwide, by the way.
Yes. So let me show you a little bit about how we put this together. So when they stick the flash drive in, they will see welcome from the Chancellor. And it's very similar to our website. So Erica did a really good job of making it very cohesive. They'll see part one, which is mostly the instruction. And the most important part of part one is the statement of integrity, attesting to the integrity of this document that both I had to sign and the Chancellor had to sign, stating that everything that we wrote is true and factual and that we operate with integrity of the institution. Then, uh, part two is all information about the institution, our locations, what we, what kind of degrees we offer, all of our certificates, all of the background information and overview about our institution, all of that is part two. And then part three are the principles that we have to address, the twenty-two I mentioned. So for instance, these are the ones, within these sections are additional principles. So if I go to section six faculty, you'll see six point one, we had to talk about our faculty, our full-time faculty, we had to talk about our program faculty, who supports the program, how are our programs implemented? And then six point two C is program coordination. So these are the three within section six that we had to address. And each one has detailed information. So if you look at full-time faculty, it talks about how we believe we have enough full-time faculty, how we decide that we have enough full-time faculty, and how we compare to other institutions. We have to put all of that in this document. And we've got various locations, qualifications, how we determine that we're qualified, what is our process for doing that? And then supporting documentation, all of that supporting documentation. So this was not a quick, little, easy task by any means, but it took a lot of people and a lot of work to get our point. The final part is part five. And so what happened to part four? Part four is only for institutions that require a follow-up report from their tenure. We were not put in that category, so we did not have to do a part four. But we did have to do a part five, which is an overview of our QEP, our Quality Enhancement Plan. Back in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, we had to develop one that we put, we coined as FACS, Faculty Advised Students Thrive. And that over the years has evolved into more of our student success teams, but we had to write how that happened and all about the data that we acquired during that time and how we improved that process. And we had to do it in ten pages. I think we wrote close to seventeen at one point, Stephanie, and she had to really, really bring it back down and they will stop reading in ten pages. And if you don't have everything you need, then that's it. So that's, that's what we, what we submitted. So everybody say your prayers and keep the progress and like what we wrote.
Yeah, remember, without this, we can't operate. We're shut down. So we've got to get through this process and we're being, we're being judged by our peers. This is, so we don't know who's going to be the readers of these and what they're going to find. And then it goes back to the staff for their analysis, staff being Saks, COC. And then it finally evolves up to the trustees, which I am one of, but I assure you that that's probably not a plus for this. It could be, it could be, it could work against us. So we have to be careful and we have to address all these issues and make sure, they're looking to see, okay, are you operating within, within integrity? Are you operating within the confines of your, of all of your policies, within the confines of your, your budgets? We have so many institutions, I sat on fourteen that I did, two I was a primary reader, and the biggest thing that they felt, the biggest things that came out of that were faults, faulty of not having financial integrity, not having balanced budgets, not operating within, within, inside of your budget each year. The other one was the trustee's involvement in operations. That's, that's a huge one for, I can't believe that's that big, but it, but it is. And the other one is QEP. And they just tore these schools apart. So what they do at that point is you get put on a, you get, you get a little hickey and then you have to, you're, you're, you're not, it's not clean, you're not through. So you got another year to look at things. And so I would guess, and Dr. Garrett would probably guess that, you know, the chances of us getting a clean shot on all this and coming out unscathed is probably not going to happen.
Yeah. Dr. Shealy reminded me. He said, don't miss process. He said ninety-nine percent of the schools do not come out totally clean. You will have a follow-up report. So what to expect after December is if it's minor, we'll have follow-ups that will be due and reviewed at the June Saks Board Meeting. If it's major, we have a year to fix it. So I, we're going to be that one percent. I've been on many review committees also and a lot of the schools that it dinged are on faculty qualifications, which is usually a pretty easy fix, that that's not a year-long fix. It's a matter of, well, we agree or we need to review all the information. So here's how we qualify and they will get signed. The other one that most of the schools do get dinged on is program reviews and how you evaluate your programs and make improvements based on your evaluation. So those are the two big ones that. And of course, the QEP because they don't quite follow through. Little plan. Any questions?
Uh, thank you to Dr. Garrett and her team. Yeah. Okay, sir, that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Next item is the Corial County Appraisal District, your request, Mr. Fast.
Mitch, you're on if you want to come up. Mitch Fast is going to do the presentation today. We're lucky to have him here to join us. He's with the Corial Central Appraisal District and he's going to share some of their, the things they do and how they operate and then his, his request to us. Mitch?
Hello, thank you for coming and visiting today. I'm here because my board director has asked me to keep up from the actions of Corial County to be comfortable with the recent, I have to turn the board off the tax needs and ensure that's what the office does, which is from two, forty-five percent of all. There are seven and eight taxing jurisdictions in Corial County. That may seem like a lot, but seven have to do with the whole jurisdiction being in the county and on the per portion, or several small schools. We're here all the time to promote the kinds of being authorized, being required to do those advanced signs, being able to have small portions of part of the Corial County. Of all of those, we have one vote and we're getting small cesss. I have to have three-quarter majority of taxing units against the summer, good idea to, you know, we operate to. Fourteen against. I have looked through ten of these, uh, these are all waiting for a review. There are four, fifteen, on next month, and two of the portions of three of the all of them are left. We have to have five on all three of the ten, so we are getting. As far as the plan, what we want to do is stop leasing on current facilities, which have a couple of leasing properties of forty-one hundred dollars. And buy and disney office building and model to the CP, and include some allocated over forty, over forty-five thousand dollars for the project. We have thirty thousand dollars to put down, go down, finance the other three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We have contacted local management, we should have better in place that applies to that property. And we have a property contract right now worth a thousand dollars, two, three. These one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for model costs are due. That's not a extravagant amount, but we're here for the project. So that's a little bit about the plan. Some of those folks are curious about how much this might cost for the location. And as I mentioned, since the mortgage payment is going to be less than in leasing, we don't anticipate the project increasing the operating budget towards the client from taxing jurisdiction because of. There are some things about owning the property that may have opened up before, it's going to maintain a deferred account for repairs and maintenance, something like that, also will simply. Basically, that office was built back in two thousand one. We retired that operation five and a half years. So now there's no operations budget in mind, I think, for the office facility. We're going to have to re- and start to save. We could like to get, hire this project in a similar contract, I think, which I'd either operate on, possibly, possibly for a year or. For many entities, it's kind of six one-way apple, because we have, you're not making a complete conscious to the operating budget for office facility structures like that. So it's not a big expenditure for you, it's also not a big safety for you or the process. That is, I mean, there's certainly four entities that make up the majority of the average budget. Campus School District has about, I call it thirty percent contribution, uh, Corial County, City of Copper's Cove, and Days of Lies, we call all about twenty percent each per contribution. So a little quick math, that's about nine percent of the district's budget is remaining those four different, remaining fourteen percent, school, that remaining ten percent. There are one, the bigger ones here, about forty percent. So contemporary law, authority budget, three percent of that comes from some of the prices of property. So I can think about this project, certain inform on the last two years on what we're going to do, currently. And currently, it's going to be annual third person. Initially, we'll look at, we can definitely do that. I feel a lot of that are currently rated twenty-three hundred dollars. And the future, that would be, we have, we have other use, uh, the city of Copper's Cove. Many of them are in the same price line and the perfect thing, which probably requires a technical improvement, a technical improvement to, uh, raise, uh, pretty little amount of consideration. We have built a new building, that ended up being quite expensive, basically because of the commercial cost, uh, providing the area, uh, which might, I do, build it, uh, relatively, and not, still have to farm aside, alongside. So five facilities, which is located in this spot, right, actually, working through the chain of office facilities, offices around, behind, walkway, wide there, that's a pretty kind of, kind of area, or also another, uh, county, city, or city, as well as, as well as, uh, access first, a thousand dollars, and, uh, the office four, office five, and of course, technical launch, that's a double. So that led us to this point today, reduce, uh, approval from, uh, all who do this project for people to have a resolution that wants to execute. And you are in favor of this process? How in favor of the fifty? It was not a whole order, it's not a name, that's all. Little action, really, same fault, as I was thinking of one of the, uh, important. So there were a lot of information to be, a lot of, uh, I want to do.
Jim.
Exactly. I think what you said, that you're committed to three, approximately, three percent. So that just means that ours wouldn't go up, it wouldn't be anything, it would remain at that level. Well, how much of an increase would it take?
Well, all I'm talking about right now is the expense of making office building possible. And probably the least, four, five, I'm anticipating that our office is going to be about a second, of which, since it was, basically, it's possible to prove that that company is, um, that company. Don't see that change.
Okay.
Like here.
Yeah, make sure you get the mic.
Yes, sir. Okay. So I do live in Corial County in Copper's Cove and your current location is kind of hard to find sometimes. And I do like the new location, so right across the street from where the city council meets and over by where Mayor Hall lives. So I think it's a really good, my only question was about, you look at the current space you're at right now and, and where y'all want to move, is it going to be a smaller facility? Or is it about the same square footage?
Same size, we're going five, about four, about four feet. And initially, the time of the new facility, we're trying to develop, what is called a program, which is to have one extra office and one extra work area, so actually, we are increasingly available, office space, basically, that's, it's like a little more efficient. Also have two additional spaces, each of office, uh, in the foreseeable future, I'd say ten years, we could add four quarters, we have staff, ten staff, thirty staff, and thirty-four. Being able to increase the size of this, that. The actual location built out in policy, we're not able to expand that side at all. Do you have the possibility of that?
I do like the location where y'all want to go to. It's like you were saying, it's, the people drive down Robertson right there all the time and if they see your office there, they know exactly where they can go. I'd be, I'd be in favor of.
I appreciate that. And about everything, all of one night, you said someone, the, like, this, this, this day, uh, for, we are, he's probably off the original project, uh, that, uh, care for, uh, as an office, and, of course, we create a hundred dollars for this, also, pushing the, um, that, oh, oh. Once again, our, our, that large, in this case, a duty question, can we bring this along, or?
Any other questions? Mr. Fast?
I have a question, sir. Mr. Liberman and I were talking about this yesterday and Bob, you had some questions. You want to grab that mic at the end if you wouldn't, wouldn't mind?
Sure.
For some clarification, I think, for all of you.
You addressed, got me. You addressed part of them where you talked about you had a, you had a reserve account where you were taking care of maintenance. I just wanted to make sure that you had already looked into projecting for your cost related to facilities maintenance, custodial, et cetera, and if it was going to be similar or had, was that programmed into your previous amount of rent or was that something y'all were already paying in addition to, or is that going to be an additional cost?
Things like, uh, service and law care, even, uh, care commissioner, uh, in my office and ours are all part of the, uh, mission. They took, to, around the, that's our current question, so, uh, all setting, you have a computer, place your account, current workstation, we're, prior to that, for, for, when we get to the, 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 so, uh, if it all works out, we're going to tie in to, to, uh, bring the whole office, have our, uh, uh, you're, you're, uh, back in the, uh, uh, here, whatever they ask.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Appreciate it, sir. Thanks for coming over.
Thanks, Mitch. And I've prepared, yeah, we prepared a resolution that we'll present, sir, at the board meeting.
We'll have that next week.
Yes, sir.
Next item is the Fire Science Technology Program, Ms. Amrepa.
Danny, you can take your mask off, it'll, we'll probably be able to hear you better. I'm gonna get close to that mic. Tammy, you can take your mask off, it'll, we'll probably be able to hear you better on that, get close to that mic.
Yeah, it would, it would be better, probably, um, between the mask and my braces. I'm gonna do my best to communicate to all of you, thank you for the opportunity to present this afternoon. Uh, good afternoon. Uh, so, I'm Tammy Samarepa, I'm the department chair for, uh, Health Sciences. And I am here today to propose a partnership with, uh, CTC and Colleen Fire Department. It's going to be the Fire Science Technology, which is geared for firefighters, uh, in the community that are interested in becoming firefighters. Uh, of course, we all know what firefighters are and what they do. Uh, we do know that they are a targeted occupation. And so, uh, that makes this relevant because there is a need, uh, there has been a needs assessment conducted. We know that the employment for firefighters is going to increase by seventeen point three four percent within the next ten years. And we know that the annual wages are about fifty-two thousand, and some cities are even starting at sixty-eight thousand. And so, we know that there's a market and we know that there is, um, a need. And so, what we're proposing is a, a partnership that collaborates with the city of Colleen to manage and operate the Colleen Local Fire Training Academy. This partnership between CTC and Colleen Fire Department would align the new academy under CTC's Deputy Chancellor of Instructional and Workforce Initiative and fall under the Department of Health Sciences. Through this partnership, CTC would utilize the physical training resources of Colleen Fire Department. These resources would be utilized in, in concert with CTC's faculty who would provide the instruction and lab portions of the courses on CTC's main campus. And so, what this would be is a partnership to where we collaborate together utilizing their facilities and doing all of the instruction and lab here on campus. The reason for this partnership is the Colleen Fire Academy has been running since two thousand and two. However, this past year, they identified that they were no longer going to offer the Fire Academy in Colleen. With that being said, there's a need for firefighters in the area, and they also serve the KISC, Cool District. We have recently been approached by Lampassus ISD, Copper's Cove ISD, Gatesville ISD, and Colleen ISD about the future of firefighting training in the area. This sparked a conversation between Colleen Fire Department and my department as to how we can move forward with providing the training and collaborating together. So, what this Fire Academy would do is prepare the graduates to become Basic Structure Fire Suppression Officers through TCFT, which is the Texas Commission on Fire Protection. Uh, we would follow all of the TCFT curriculum, which is very big, by the way. Uh, we would, we would make sure that the students can perform basic firefighter duties uh, to prepare for emergency scene, pre-incident settings. And obviously, we would be fulfilling the professional employer expectations for entry-level firefighters. And so, some of the details are, we have created a sixty credit hour Associate of Applied Science and Fire Science Technology. We've also, uh, created a twenty-eight credit hour certificate in Fire Science Technology. These would be two new programs, uh, offered here at CTC that are currently not offered. The, um, the idea would be that we would offer a fall cohort, we would offer a pre-cohort, so two cohorts, two cohorts a year. We would have to have a full-time and part-time faculty, they are very credentialed, uh, to teach the program. And so, we would start off with less, and as we get the students involved, we would then increase our faculty. But, uh, initially, our plan is to start out part-time so that we can, with part-time faculty, so that we can at least, uh, get all the approvals that need to be done through all of our creditors, uh, to be able to offer this program. This would be, um, the twenty students per cohort plus fifteen KISC students every year. Uh, and that's just for KISC. The other ISDs have not provided actual enrollment or interest directly to numbers. Uh, they are just seeking a place to be able to send students, and then we should get numbers for those ISDs as well. What this will do is, currently, right now, to be a firefighter, you must have EMT training. Uh, it is a requirement of that certification. Our college already offers EMT training. And so, what we would do is, um, firefighting is one semester, EMT would be another semester. So, the student potentially in two semesters could complete those requirements. So now, we have a very quick program that we can put students out into the workforce very quickly. And it's something that we know already has a job market. Okay. And so, um, as I stated before, we have multiple school districts that have reached out. Uh, and so, we hope to be able to facilitate all of those needs that the community has. We, uh, would be running the Fire Academy Monday through Friday and some Saturdays. Um, we believe that this is something that will help, uh, the community, but also enhance our partnership with the fire departments in the area. Right now, Colleen Fire Department is the only fire department in the area that is offering fire training. Temple Fire Department has tried to start their academy, um, but they have not had success. And, um, McLean and Community College has, uh, partnered with Waco Fire Department to attempt something similar. We are actually following the model of Lynn and Texas A&amp;M. Lynn College has a model that works with a fire entity. And, uh, we have been working very close with Lynn to develop curriculum and degrees and costs and budgets and those type things. And so, we would be following the Lynn, Texas A&amp;M model. And so, with your approval, we would like to, um, propose the program and move forward with the development of a new program for CTC and a partnership with the new fire department.
Let me, let me say a couple of things here. You know, a couple of years ago, I, I mentioned to you that we were looking at, at doing that. Dr. Adie and I had, uh, received a message that, uh, Colleen was going to do away with their, with their academy. Uh, so, I, I, I asked Dr. Adie, I said, uh, get, get on this quick and let's get with the city manager and see if we can't secure those facilities that they have, which she did, she got Tammy involved. Uh, my vision was to, to expand this out, which they've done with the school districts, uh, to bring them in. It's also going to require, uh, Ted Gonzalez to be involved in, in that process to, to secure that. But also, uh, they're, they are trying to seek out the purchase of seats, you know? If, if, if the, uh, Clean Fire, if Colleen Fire Department and wants to buy five of those, uh, twenty cohort seats, that makes it a lot easier to scrounge up another fifteen students to get in these programs. I don't think we'll have a problem. I think the numbers are, are, uh, small enough that we can accommodate that. There are some budget, uh, issues, some budget, I'm about to say issues, some challenges. And Bob and I talked about that this morning, and, and I've talked to Dr. Carter about it. Bob, could you, uh, I, I catch you off guard here, but kind of give us a quick, uh, a quick analysis of what you see of this process? Because remember, these are new programs, and when, in our biennium, we, we are funded based on what we did previously. So, we're not going to get any money for the first year or two from the state to help support this. And so, we've got to understand, uh, what that is. And so, Bob has worked with, uh, Dr. Adie and, and Ms. Samarepa to, uh, to, uh, to put together the budget, which I, I think is a doable budget.
I'm going to speak from the hip, I'm surprised you didn't show it, Tammy, but if, if I miss state, share with me. But, but what the chancellor had mentioned, you know, the way our state appropriations work, I'm still, I've been doing it for thirty-one years, and I'm still trying to figure out why they do it the way they do it. But the funding that we will receive in the next biennium is based upon the contact hours that we generated in this biennium. So, the first two years that you run a program, you technically aren't earning any state funding for them. Because that state funding is already set. Before you start the year, that state funding is, is put in place.
We do have a copy of the budget that, um, is made.
Great, great. They, they can, absolutely, they can see that then. Um, so, if you look at that, you will notice in those, in those first two years, there is revenue coming in from tuition and fees, but there's no revenue coming in for state funding. And it's almost impossible to run a positive number in a program without the state funding. And make sure you tip your waitresses.
What a, what a coincidence to get a budget and darkness at the same time.
It's a dark. I'm just keeping up with my tradition, sir. So, so if you'll notice, if you'll notice that the first, the first two years, um, we run at a deficit. That's because there is no state funding numbers. But when you look at years three, four, and five, we are running, uh, in the black. And by the time you get to the fifth year, the cumulative number of the five years combined has you in the black. And that's based upon the enrollment projections that you see at about the middle of the page, which is fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five, seventy, and seventy-five for each of those years. And, you know, what I shared with the chancellor when we first discussed this, he said, Bob, what do you think? And I said, well, sir, all the numbers look fine, they all make sense, everything adds up. Um, that's at, once again, it's also at today's tuition rate. As we all know, five years from now, there's a good possibility we'll have a higher tuition rate. Um, but I said, sir, the only thing I don't know for sure are the enrollment numbers. I said, that's based upon a projection, which is all we ever do. But that's when the chancellor came back and said, Bob, I think these are low numbers. He said, I think we didn't even get there. So, so, you know, I got that confidence when the chancellor tells me that, because he's normally, um, he's positive, but he's not going to, he's not going to overshoot the mood when it's not there. So, I feel comfortable based upon these numbers that by year five, we should be caught up to where we have made up for the first two years of not getting state funding, and we're actually running at a positive every year, and we've recouped anything that we lost in the first four years. And from that point forward, we should be at a position where we're actually adding to the reserve.
And I, I also told Bob this morning that, you know, that Harrison Keller doesn't like this funding model. It doesn't make sense to him, it doesn't make sense to us, never has. Uh, so you start new programs, you, you can't get any money for them for two years, it doesn't make sense. And it, it, it leaves, uh, it's hard to then start new programs. He is trying to change that model with the state, I don't know how successful that will be. The community colleges are, are supporting that, that effort to go to an annual, uh, approval process, so you, you only lag it back one year. Now, to throw the other caveat in here, we haven't talked about it, and that is Dr. Garrett. She's going to have to get this program approved, uh, by the state and by SAC, COC. So, there still is a process we got to, we've got to go through to get to this. But, uh, I think, uh, hats off to the staff for, uh, pursuing this, uh, this is a, a great opportunity for us. And, thank you.
Couldn't, uh, couldn't you use the, uh, same model you used for, uh, this academy?
Well, that, that's, it's the same, that's the same model. In other words, it's the funding model, and that's set by the state, not by us. So, they're the ones who, who say, you know, you're funded on a biennium, uh, basis. And so, if we were to start a police academy right now, we'd be in the same boat. We'd be waiting two, two years before we get any funding for them.
Jim, I have a question, uh, you, you made reference to about our relationship with the city and facilities. Uh, obviously, Fire Academy has special and unique facilities related to it. How much of that is going to have to be built here? Uh, how much of it will we be using, uh, uh, distance learning, or, or not distance learning, but, but people having to move back and forth to the Colleen facilities?
They have a, they have a burn facility there, and they have all the kinds of things that they do there that we don't have on this campus. Not, Tammy, do you want, can you address that quickly, or Dr. Adie, one of you?
So, um, the way this would work is that every student would have a fee that they would pay. Um, that fee has already been incorporated into the differential tuition. That fee, what it is, is we will, uh, we will have a fee that will be offered between to where we can utilize their facilities, they would be required to maintain the facilities. Uh, and we would use all of their equipment, with exception to the bunker gear. The bunker gear, the student would rent the bunker gear, um, with a approved company. And so, that also is under the commission. And so, uh, we would not be building anything, uh, they would not be building anything. They would be maintaining the equipment as part of the contractual agreement that is, uh, working on with them. And then, um, we then would be doing the lab training and the, uh, classroom instruction.
And I think that differential is, Bob, is it fifty dollars?
Fifty dollars, and, and you'll also notice on the budget that you have there, the departmental operational expenses, that's where those expenditures lie, that we, we would take to pay, pay the facility rental, if, if that's a good term for it, as well as the other expenses. You notice, expenses are minimal. It's not like we've got to go buy, you know, a hundred fifty thousand dollar engine and train on it or build, build a, uh, a, a, a burn facility.
And, and that was actually the purpose of collaborating with an entity that already has the equipment, are done the training, and are approved through TCFT with the equipment they have. So, we know the equipment is valid when it comes to the, um, instructing the student on the skills portion.
So, out of curiosity, is the, uh, is the instructor that you're looking at, and Dr. Adie and I talked about this a couple of months ago, uh, employing the, the guy that's, uh, running that academy now? Uh, Colleen li- liked him, he just, he wants to retire. I thought, well, maybe we could snatch him up and put him as an instructor, I don't know.
Yeah, he has, um, he has stated that he is going to be retiring. Now, what he wants to do after he retires, that he has not shared with me, however, uh, that's something we could ultimately entertain with, with the person. Um, to see if he might be.
Well, he's a known quantity with them and, and with the school district.
Yes.
And since, since Colleen has purchased fifteen seats, uh, fifteen students to go through that academy, and their contract runs out, uh, I guess Mr. Gonzalez will be negotiating, and you all will, with KISC to, to continue that type of contract with us. And they, they have confidence in that, that, uh, instructor, so, that's why.
Yeah, we, we actually want to capture more than KISC. Uh, we, we really would like to, um, facilitate the other ISDs that are interested in firefighting. Uh, but it would be a very similar model, those KISC students, uh, go to the fire center for training. Uh, they would be coming here for training, and then they'd be bussed over to the fire center for, uh, the actual skill and live burns.
I've heard from Copper's Cove, and I've, I've also heard from Gatesville, I haven't heard from the others, but you have, so.
Yeah, Lampassus is actually reaching out all over, uh, but we told them the whole time that they were facilitating, um, a partnership. And so, we hope to, to launch.
So, question?
If this is approved, wouldn't, wouldn't it project its current, right, going to be here?
So, we, we have, uh, place the goal of, uh, fall twenty twenty-one to spring twenty twenty-two timeframe is when we hope to, uh, work with that prepared office and, um, get that approved through the appropriate entity. Uh, some of this can be done simultaneously, such as the certification from the Texas Commission on Fire Protection. It happened after we get Higher Education Coordinating Board approval. So, at the same time that happens, we can submit for another creditor. So, um, we hope to launch it fall twenty twenty-one, spring twenty twenty-two, so it's not fall, right?
And if we can get it done sooner, we're going to do it sooner. You know, I, I keep pushing them.
Yes, that is correct. As soon as we get our approval, yes.
What are we looking at in terms of, of the numbers that you projected here? As the service area we've got, and everybody's got a firefighter, maybe volunteer, but there's, there's a lot of people involved in firefighting. How are we going to reach out to those people? I'm sure they have to have some kind of a system, even a volunteer fighter. Guys got to do something if they go down to Texas A&amp;M and go through that school.
Remember, sir, we, we've got the, uh, we've got our sites out there, and we've got our site reps in these, in our service area that work with the school districts and the community. So, uh, we're going to be marketing to the. So we're going to be marketing to them to send people here. We have a dormitory and we can get back to some normalcy around here and we can put people in it. We can make that available for them to come and spend the week in a dorm or whatever. So we could, there's a lot, we have a lot of opportunity. But a lot of the things we can offer currently without coming to that to get that degree. So like for E M T and we're doing E M T in some of the service area now. And they can continue that and then flip over to get their firefighting courses. I'm not going to, you know, some of those could probably, and I don't know, Tammy, you can ask me, but some of those could probably be taught online, some of the courses. I don't know if parts of them could.
Some of the other courses can, but the majority of them would be traditional because there is a lot of hands-on components with firefighting. So some can be online, like leadership skills could be online, but most of it would be free.
That's, that's our plan, sir, is to get it out in the service area and get.
It seems to me like there's an opportunity out there. But I think we have to look at it and the standpoint of what we can do to get it started as soon as we can and, and make it a quality program that everybody be proud of. And we would incorporate this with the local communities. Because there, there's just too many firefighters. And the turnover rate, by the way, is, is horrible. Most firefighters don't stay for 30 years.
Yeah, well, yes, and, and one of the things too is pay. You know, some of the cities that are bigger pay much better. And so Colleen unfortunately does have a high turnover of firefighters because they need to go to places that pay more. But they depend on that academy to hire and to have people from this area. And so we also have, and this is a population I did not share, is we do have our military. Our military has been reaching out for firefighting. And a lot of them are security whiskeys that have their E M T already. And all they need to do is go through the fire park and they could be making $65,000 where they're going. So, yeah, so we, we have another population outside of just the community and K I S D. We have our military, whether they're retired or, you know, just getting out, transitioning. It's a one semester program. So it's very viable.
So what we need is an approval from the board to move forward with this and we'll do that at the, at the board meeting.
I like what, but, General Weaver was saying, I got your name there first. But there's such a high turnover of firefighters throughout society because everybody, you know, all, most of us guys won't be firefighters. We're going to be a firefighter or police officer, right? And you get in there, you buy, this really isn't for me, right? And, you know, into the constant flux of people going in and getting, getting all that training and stuff, that, that's really good. I have a friend right now and he's in the fire academy right now. His brother's a police officer, successful one, and he's going to be a successful firefighter. I think it's a really good service to provide this stuff for the people in this community, for Central Texas College, right?
Yeah, and remember, we are, we are the community college for a 10,000 square mile.
Right.
Part of Texas.
You got like, you got.
Forty-some communities and we're it.
You've got all these kids out there living in the Kimner area or, or outside of our district, I mean, that Kimner and Johnboro and all those people that the volunteer fire departments, they need that training and they can get it from us.
And I can tell you, if we don't do this, there will be a college come here and do it. So, and we can't keep them out. You know, there's a gentleman's agreement that we have a service area and we're supposed to honor each other's service area. But I can tell you that we have community colleges that have already infiltrated our service area. You know, they just, there's no one to police it. There's no, there's no provision for assessment of head behavior on their part. So it's just, it's a gentleman's thing. But I can tell you that a, a program like this will, 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 will bring somebody here. Either Austin Community College or Temple College or somebody will be over here running that academy. So I, I think it's, it's, it's an opportunity for us. It's a huge opportunity for us, for our colleagues in the service area.
Sir, you're absolutely right. Two weeks ago, I received a phone call from a college asking about the fire program and interested in the fact that maybe if we weren't going to do it, wouldn't they be open to coming? And so you're absolutely correct. They have already.
Was it T S T C?
No, sir.
Oh, good, because they're on my list.
And I would, I would rather, like yours, I would rather us do it than a professional school do it. Probably be less expensive on our side for us to do that education and go out and try to be successful with that training.
And these, these enrollments, General Weaver are, I, I, I think are minimum. I, I really think we can, we'll do better than this, but we have, you know, we're conservative when we go in on these numbers and see if we can support it with these low numbers. The idea is to go in and double these numbers, but, you know, whether we can double them or not, I don't know. But it's, it just depends on, on how much ingenuity we have in our, in our, in our faculty and staff to, to wicker around some things, to make some things happen and, and utilize all of our time. That facility sits there just like these do 24/7. And so if the, if the blonde says, we can use them 24/7.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Our next item is the Title IX report, Ms. Jordan.
Now, get close or turn it up so you're working. Just twist that thing up. You can hold it.
Hit it again.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah. Yeah, we can hear you. Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, I'm here this afternoon to provide a report. This will be a routine report on Title IX. And Title IX is the sexual misconduct federal regulation. And so typically, usually, anything that was a sexual misconduct, that would be a, you know, a little negative report. We do have some somewhat positive news to share with you this afternoon. I do have a report. Is everybody present?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So the requirement is that we report to the board of trustees every semester. And so the report that you have in front of you is for the entire faculty and faculty. Last spring semester, we can be actually being starting presented. We shared the information that we had 12 cases. And look at the report now, man. The positive news is that we still have just 12 cases. The only update to this report is we closed out that, the newest report that we had received at the end of the spring semester. This will be something, as I mentioned, that we'll report to you every semester. And I will be handing this over to Mr. Pickman. He is the newly appointed Title IX coordinator. Some of the new changes that were implemented by the Department of Education. We had to change some of our laws. So now Mr. Pickman will be coming to you at the end of the semester to report. Okay, do you want to stand up? You've seen him before, but they're, they're going to handle it. Do you have any questions?
I have a question, Holly, on the numbers. Closed cases with disciplinary actions says eight, but then if you look over, it's three, three, two and one. That, that nine? Or do you not count the termination? It probably should be nine, I guess.
Plus the closed cases, eight and five, four within the 12 that are under investigation. I don't know if anybody strained at the numbers, but there's probably an explanation for all that.
That would be nine and five.
But the numbers all the way around don't look good because you've got eight and five, 13. You've only got 12 cases because you've got 13 actions.
Well, and I can explain that.
One guy getting more than one punishment.
Well, because there were, in, in one situation, there were multiple parties and there was multiple actions that was taken. So that kind of explains, we've got that little disclaimer.
Yeah, but the number of cases, if there's only 12 cases, then there should only be 12 cases. Now we've got 13 cases. Within a case, if you have multiple parties, you can't count one case, right?
Right, and what we're trying to show you is the number of people impacted. So we should update this party. So there's a total of 12 cases. There was a total of eight individuals that we took some type of action, or actually nine people that we took some type of action. We'll update this summary report.
You know, it seems to me like we're talking cases and you have multiple people, but a case is eight cases. Case number A B C, one, two, three, you count those up, there's 12 of them, right? So there shouldn't be a total of 12. So eight and five is wrong. You only have 12 cases, even though you've got multiple parties, it's still one case.
Math aside, math aside, it looks to me like the numbers are minimal based upon the crowd that we deal with. So thank you for that.
Okay, I will explain to you the summary. You know, you have the federal regulation and then the state of Texas actually is who requires us to report to the board of trustees. And in that requirement from the state of Texas, it has the categories of how we have to explain. So we'll go back to the, the Texas law and make sure that it's clear to the board. Thank you.
Okay, good report. Thank you.
I just thought that was mad.
Any other questions, Ms. Jordan? Our next item on the agenda is Joe's Florida's contract reward, Ms. Armstrong.
Can you hear me now? We have two contracts that are up for renewal, need to be approved. So those will be going to the board meeting this, this month. The first one is Joel's flooring. We utilize them for job order contract services, minor construction renovation. The contract with them is $300,000. This would be option period one. The second is for wood environmental consulting and services. This also would be option one for them. We use them for any type of environmental consulting, testing, when we do an abatement. If we have some other indoor air quality mold or moisture issues, we will work with them. We don't anticipate, because we're at the moment not doing any abatement projects, that the spend will not exceed $150,000 tonight. So we're looking at option period one for, I think I jumped ahead because that was, on my sheet here, there are two contracts. I think there are two.
Yeah, we've got two items on the agenda. You're carrying both of them at the same time.
He spent more money than I know.
So that had satisfactory progress in service to extend the contract is what you're representing.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Thanks, sir. I take share of item eight and seven. Our next item is nine, the direct investment reinvestment zone, turns number two, actually, board member appointment, in office.
Yes, at the last board meeting, because I got this letter on August 17th, which was the day before the board meeting, this requires that we have board action. We took, we discussed it, I mentioned it, and we had to bring it before this board workshop in order to get it on the agenda for the board meeting next Tuesday to be voted on. So that's why we're talking about it again. And we discussed the taxing increment reinvestment zone two with the, the city of Colleen to the city manager. Mr. Rex Weaver's term on that board expired on 30 September 2020. So it expires. And so we want to make an, it was, I'm asking you all to make an appointment of someone from this board to serve on that, volunteer to do that. But that, that, I'll leave it to your discretion as to how you want to move forward with this. But if, if we decide to do that with Mr. Weaver, then we will put it on the agenda for next Tuesday and vote on it. And then it'll be official and we'll turn it in, so.
I guess the question, does anybody want the job?
Sounds like an offer.
It doesn't meet that often. And I think I explained to you all the last time we met what their current project is. And that's refurbishment of the East Gate to make it look, I don't know, more aesthetic, appease Fort Hood. I don't know, Fort Hood is in deep trouble right now. So anything we can help might help him. Keep keeping up with what's going on in the army. You know what I'm talking about. The, it doesn't take that much work, but it is time consuming. Hold on, if you want me to, hold on there next time.
Okay, I will, I will prepare the document for General Rex Weaver to serve on that next term.
Next item is recommending topics for upcoming agenda items or announcements. Mr. Armstrong, you on the phone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you, you start with you. You got any recommendations?
Yeah, I can not say.
Okay.
Any additions here? No, thanks, sir.
Not today. No, sir.
The only item I have, we need to discuss as soon as we can, and it'd be the next workshop, is the question that came up at the foundation board meeting about the control over the board by this body of trustees. And I think we need to discuss that at the next.
We can put it, we'll put it down as a discussion item with the board. I don't know that the foundation board will have, have met and discussed anything by then, but we'll, you will.
We just need to know what, what their thinking is and where our position is.
You know.
We'll discuss it next time.
Debbie, you got it?
Announcement of the regular board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020, and the bird workshop scheduled for Tuesday, October 3rd, 2020. Yeah, I think that the board workshop Tuesday, October 20. Yeah, that's correct, okay. All right, then we'll have the board meeting then on the 27th. And so far, I guess we'll do it in this format unless somebody's got an objection to it, which it seems to work okay.
I think it's working fine.
In that case, the next item is adjournment and we'll stand adjourned.